Yeah, maybe I can for a little bit.
What was that, tonight? Just one day?
Yeah. Good evening, welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is the Marion City Council meeting for Thursday, April eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. And please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jensen?
Here.
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Mr. Miskman?
Here.
Mayor Abou Osley?
Here.
Ms. Menser?
Here.
Mr. Brandt?
Here.
Mr. Sterned?
Here.
Thank you. It's time we have a moment of silence.
Recording in progress.
Hey, thank you. Before we get on with the order of business, I brought, I brought treats. You know, I like to celebrate things, so. I brought treats to celebrate Mike Barcalo's new position, so I'll let him, I'll let him hand these out after, so you have to stick around for, after the meeting. And he can hand those out tonight. And they're very good. I might have tried one or two on the, in the car on the way here, so. I think there's plenty there. Okay, our first item on the agenda this evening is a proclamation. This is the first time, I think, that we've made this proclamation. It's for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. And we have the best of the best here. Our communications manager, Rhonda, to accept it, so come on up front. Okay. Whereas emergencies that require police, fire, or emergency medical services can occur at any time. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from individuals who contact the Marion Public Safety Communications Center. And whereas public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our residents have with emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers, firefighters, and paramedics by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety telecommunications of the Marion Public Safety Communications Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now, therefore, I Nicholas Abou Osley Maker, Mayor of the City of Marion, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the week of April fourteenth through twentieth, twenty twenty-four, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the city of Marion. In honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keeps our city and residents safe. Do you have something to?
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
I don't know that I can top that. I guess dispatchers, as they're, as they're applying for this job, they don't have any idea what they're really applying for. They don't know what they're getting into until they're sitting in that seat. Every call is different. You know, one minute it could be something very easy, and the next minute it could be something very tragic. So they're, they're putting themselves in that spot on a, on a daily basis, on a minute basis. They're really, they've learned to be ambassadors for the whole city, learning all kinds of jobs, learning everything that every department does. Because a lot of those phone calls that come in are general calls that the public is needing help with, and that's what they do. They generally are there to help people. That's what they signed up for. But along with that, they also end up learning the officer's jobs and the firefighter's jobs in order to keep them safe as well. So they're, they're a pretty dedicated bunch of people. It's no longer a job to them. It is part of them. It's their career, and they're, they're very dedicated to everyone they work with and, and the whole city. I'm extremely proud to be, to serve with them and serve for them. And I know that if they were all here, which they like to stay behind the scenes, they would thank you extremely very much for this.
Please give them our, our thanks and gratitude and thank you. At this time, there's a public forum, which is a time that is set aside for members of the public to address the city council regarding any item that's listed on the agenda and, and not associated with a public hearing. If anyone is here to address the council regarding an item associated with a public hearing, there'll be time, there'll be time during that time. And items that are not on the agenda, there will be another public forum at the end of the meeting. We ask everyone to please observe the guidelines that are shown on the screens. Please limit your time to five minutes or less. Please refrain from repeating anything that's said by you or others. And please be respectful of all people. Keep the comments related to the concern and not individuals, please. And we ask everyone to, I state their name and address and fill out the card and hand it to the city clerk. Anyone here to address council, please come forward. Okay, seeing no one is coming forward, we will close this part of the meeting and proceed to the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as follows. This will be items A one through F two, resolutions thirty-one, eight eighty-four through thirty-one, eight ninety.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented, including items A one through F two, resolutions three-one-eight-eight-four through three-one-eight-nine-zero. Discussions. Okay. Seeing no questions or discussion, we'll vote. All is in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. For the next part of the meeting, I will turn over the, the meeting to the mayor pro tem.
Mayor pro tem, I move to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abou Osley's abstention. And this will include items B one through F one, resolution numbers three-one-eight-nine-one to three-one-eight-nine-three.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve items B one through F one, resolutions three-one-eight-nine-one to three-one-eight-nine-three. Discussion. No discuss, or nothing with the discussion. Let's move to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries with one abstention.
Thank you.
Yes, Your Honor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-four dash zero four, designating an area of Marion, Iowa, as the twenty-twenty-four multifamily housing urban revitalization area, area, and that is our final consideration.
Second. It moved in seconded to approve the final consideration of ordinance number twenty-four dash zero four, designating the twenty-twenty-four multifamily housing urban revitalization area. Discussion. Okay, all those in favor of the final approval of ordinance number twenty-four dash zero four, please say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. The next item is a public hearing regarding the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five through twenty-twenty-nine capital improvement program. We have a presentation from Leanne. Welcome.
Thank you, Your Honor. As you can see, there have been several touchpoints with council along the way stemming all the way back to August of twenty-twenty-three, all culminating in the adoption of this plan today. Just wanted to make a few highlights. On screen, you can see the total expenditures were approximately, are approximately a hundred and thirty-seven million in the plan. Out of that a hundred and thirty-seven million, fifty-six percent is towards transportation, highlighting the annual pavement management program, Albernett Road Extension, Seventh Avenue, Twelfth Street to Twenty-Second Street, and the Tower Terrace Road Project. Twenty percent is for utility infrastructure, the annual sanitary sewer and storm sewer programs, and the Indian Creek Trunk Sewer Segment seven and eleven programs, projects. And eleven percent is for parks, culture, and recreation, which will include the completion of C-Mar Trail, Indian Creek improvements, mobile library, and a new park construction and improvements to existing parks. As far as funding for the program, twenty-seven percent is coming from local option sales tax, twenty-six percent from grants, nineteen percent from general obligation bonds, and twelve percent from other pay-as-you-go funds.
Okay. Thank you. The public hearing is now open. If anyone is here to address the council on this measure, please come forward at this time. Okay, we'll ask the staff if we received any comments outside the meeting.
I have not received any.
We have not received any in the finance office either.
Thank you. Please note that for the record, we'll close the public hearing and proceed to the resolution.
Mayor, I move to approve a resolution number three-one-eight-nine-four, approving the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five through twenty-twenty-nine capital improvement program.
Second. It's been moved in seconded to approve resolution number three-one-eight-nine-four, approving the fiscal years twenty-twenty-five through twenty-twenty-nine capital improvement program. Discussion on the resolution. All those in favor of approving resolution number three-one-eight-nine-four, please say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. The next item is a public hearing regarding the proposed fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget. Another presentation from the finance director.
Thank you, Your Honor. As we entered the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget season, House File seven-eighteen created new limitations on property tax revenues. Knowing these changes were going to be taking effect, the city has worked diligently on numerous strategies to better align revenues with our expenditures. These included updating our schedule of fees, and also to reduce costs or create efficiencies. We've done items such as partner with Wood River Energy on our gas bills, have done needs analysis when positions have been vacated, and are also working on implementation of a procurement part, card program. The goal for the year overall was to maintain existing service levels while supporting strategic plan initiatives and completion of long-term projects. This budget accomplishes that goal. The proposed budget includes resources to fund initiatives that come directly from the city's strategic plan. Under the focus area of safe community, it fills two vacant police officer positions that were previously left open to fund unplanned wage increases to help police department recruitment. There's also an upgrade to a recently vacated administrative position within the fire department that will help with reporting and other fire initiatives. Other items included, include a emergency management services feasibility study and a community risk assessment and standards of cover in the fiscal year twenty-five budget. Under the focus area of vibrant community and arguably also economic development is the Central Plaza Project implementation, which will drive traffic in our uptown area, as well as staffing for the mobile library, a new initiative that was part of the library project. Under the focus area of Team Marion, it includes the rest of the implementation of the compensation study recommendations. And then finally, under the focus area of sustainable infrastructure and services, as we just saw in the previous presentation, there is a robust CIP Capital Improvement Program with significant investment in streets of twenty-one million dollars and twenty million in sewer improvements. Overall, a fourteen dollar and eighty cents property tax levy is budgeted in order to bring in the additional two-point-one million dollars in property tax revenue required to fund needed services to our community. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. At this time, the public hearing is open. Is there anyone here to address council with regard to this measure? Please come forward. Okay, we'll ask the staff if we received any comments outside of the meeting.
I have not received any.
None here either.
Thank you. Please note that for the record, we will close the public hearing and proceed to the resolution.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number three-one-eight-nine-five, approving fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five budget.
Second. It moved in seconded to approve resolution number three-one-eight-nine-five, approving the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Discussion. Steve.
Yeah, just since we've got some very large numbers up there, and obviously this includes more funds than our general fund. Could you recap for the public how many different funds those numbers cover?
I don't have the exact number with.
The largest ones.
I mean, the largest funds are gonna be your general fund, your sanitary sewer, road use, solid waste. Those are our operating funds. There, it also includes all of the capital, and that number also includes the water department.
Oh, good. I think the public needs to understand that while we're doing, while the, the general fund does take care of all of the revenue expenses or the ongoing annual expenses that people generally associate with, there's a number of other proprietary funds that come under that that make those numbers a lot larger than what the general fund is. So a lot of times our discussions are about the general fund. I think the public needs to understand there's several funds included in those numbers.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Yeah, just, just a comment, Leanne, and I, this really goes to the entire leadership team. What I see this is, as well as this, this particular item, as well as the CIP that we, we just covered, this is the result of a much more mature milestone-based series of actions that you all have, have worked against for well over a year, quite honestly, in order to achieve this in terms of bringing this forward. And from my vantage point, this is a, you know, developing and preparing a budget and a, and a project plan for the work that, that is required for the city. I just want to applaud the, all of the work that has gone in on that for all, all of the leadership team, so thanks.
Anyone else? I will echo that. I know it takes a lot of work, and it's taken a lot of work to get to this point, presenting a, a budget. And we really appreciate all the time, the methodical way in which we're going about things now, planful way in which we're going about things. And it's really a major step in our growing up process as a city, so thank you to everyone for all your hard work. Okay. We'll take the vote. All those in favor of approving resolution number three-one-eight-nine-five, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number three-one-eight-nine-six, authorizing the use of prelim, of a preliminary official statement for the sale of general obligation corporate purpose bonds, series twenty-twenty-four A.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded to approve resolution number three-one-eight-nine-six, authorizing the use of a preliminary official statement for the sale of general obligation corporate purpose bonds, series twenty-twenty-four A. Discussion. Okay, all those in favor of approving resolution number three-one-eight-nine-six, please say aye.
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 All is opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. Next item is a public hearing regarding the twenty-twenty-four pavement patching project. We have a presentation from Mr. Barcalo.
Yes, Your Honor, so this project is part of our project management program. So this is actually going on the existing portion of Tower Terrace from Albernett to Tenth Street, and actually going into some of those joints that you can see are, are starting to come apart, and actually doing what we do, what we call cross-stitching to get those joints so that they stay there and don't keep moving on us. And then also the crosswalk that's on Sixth Avenue and Ninth Street. So that, those are the two main portions of this project. We did put it out for bid. The little bid came in from Eastern Iowa at three-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars and five cents, which was seventy-six point one percent engineer's estimate. So we are recommending proceeding with the plans and the bids and awarding contract.
Okay, at this time, the public hearing is open. Is there anyone here to address council with regard to this measure? Please come forward. Okay. Seeing no one is coming forward, we will ask the staff if we received any comments outside the meeting.
I have not received any.
If not, thank you. Please note that for the record, we will close the public hearing.
Mayor, I move to approve project calendar regarding the twenty-twenty-four pavement patching project as follows. This will be resolutions three-one-eight-nine-seven through three-one-eight-nine-eight.
Second. It moved in seconded to approve the project calendar for the twenty-twenty-four pavement patching project, including resolutions three-one-eight-nine-seven through three-one-eight-nine-eight. Discussion. All those in favor of approving this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-four dash zero five, adopting amendments to chapter one sixty-three of the Code of Ordinances relating to flood damage prevention, the twenty-twenty-four FEMA flood insurance study, and the twenty-twenty-four FEMA flood insurance rate map, and this is the final consideration.
Second. It moved in seconded to approve ordinance, ordinance number twenty-four dash zero five, adopting amendments to chapter one sixty-three of the Code of Ordinances regarding flood damage prevention and adopting the twenty-twenty-four FEMA flood insurance study and the twenty-twenty-four FEMA flood insurance rate map. Discussion. Okay, all those in favor of ordinance number twenty-four dash zero five, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved. The next item is a public comment period regarding a request to move the crosswalk at Geode Street from Durango Drive to the south side of Partridge Avenue.
Yeah, so for this one, again, we got a, a resident petition put together, and also included some of the teachers at the school. You can see the existing crosswalk is here on the north side of Durango. Their request is to put it on the south side of Partridge. I assume you can see the mouse. This is where the steps are that actually go up into the building, where most of the students actually come. So it's just, they're kind of using this entrance anyways. And so we might as well paint the one that they're using to make it safer. So we would paint that one. We would try and remove the pavement markings as much as possible on the other one and let them continue to deteriorate, and then move all the signs up to the north. So in this case, tack was in occurrence with what the petition was asking for. So we are recommending a move forward, and we do have some public comments that Rachel has regarding.
Okay, thank you. At this time, the public comment period is open. If anyone is here to discuss or address the council with regard to this measure, please come forward. Okay, we did receive comments outside the meeting.
Yes, we received three. Sarah Spooner, Rebecca Cleveland, and Andrea Wheatley. They all wrote in support of the recommendation.
Okay. If there's no one else here to address the council on this measure, we'll close the, we'll close the public comment section and proceed to the next two motions.
Yes, Your Honor, I move to receive and file Traffic Advisory Committee report regarding a request to move the crosswalk on Geode Street from Durango Drive to the south side of Partridge Avenue.
Second. It's been moved in seconded to receive and file a Traffic Advisory Committee report regarding the request to move the crosswalk at Geode Street from Durango Drive to the south side of Partridge Avenue. Any discussion on receiving and filing the report? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to receive and file the Traffic Advisory Committee report, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion directing staff to proceed with moving the pedestrian crossing signs and painted crosswalk from the existing crosswalk on Geode Street from Durango Drive to the south side of Partridge Avenue.
Second. It's been moved in seconded to direct, to, to approve the motion directing staff proceed with moving the pedestrian crossing sign and painted crosswalk from existing crosswalk on Geode Street from Durango Drive to the south side of Partridge Avenue. Discussion on the motion? Okay. All those in favor of directing staff to proceed as, as stated in the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-four dash zero six, amending the Marion zoning map regarding the revisions to thirteen properties in Marion, Iowa. City of Marion's second consideration.
Second. It's been moved in seconded to approve ordinance number twenty-four dash zero six, amending the Marion zoning map regarding the revisions to thirteen properties in Marion, Iowa. Discussion. Okay. All those in favor of approving ordinance number twenty-four dash zero six, please say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. At this time, we have a public forum, which is a time set aside for comments from members of the public on any topic. Anyone's here to address council, please come forward. Okay. Seeing no one's coming forward, we'll close that part of the meeting and proceed to council comments. Start with Steve.
The only comment I have is given that round of severe weather that moved through this portion of the state. Chief Fagan, I just wanna thank you and the department's kind of advanced response posture on that. I know you were getting inputs from emergency management on that, but I think that's all real critical, given the severity of what was faced by communities to the north, so I just appreciate that.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, um, last week, I just wanted to thank city manager Ryan Waller and council member Menser and member Mensor and Officer Phil Ford for coming to the Lynn County Mental Health Access Center tour that we organized, just to talk a little bit more about the collaboration that takes place between our communities and the center and the, and the partners that help run the center. It was just really interesting to hear Officer Ford talk about the different statistics and not only the, the time savings for, for folks that are able to go there, but also the cost savings for the different partners and cities based on, for us having that option. So, just a little shout out to the, the access center and the fact, for those that need it, it is a 24/7 walk-in service now. So, yeah, it's cool, thanks for coming.
Thanks for that opportunity, it really was a eye, eye-opener and understanding what happens there, so, um, comments, reminder that Saturday is a big day, but I want to first also give a shout out to all the city departments and staff who've been working very hard on this event, because as well as being Healthy Kids Day with the Y, we started three years ago partnering City of Marion for the City of Marion showcase. In the last few years, we have had hundreds, if not pushing 1,000 people, 500 plus, we were stuffed 500 plus bags on Monday to start getting ready for that, just with the information. There are prizes and giveaways and fun. KCRG will be there prior to the event, doing live remotes for weather, and then Joe Winters and Jan will be doing events throughout the event as one of the stops. We know all the city departments will be there with different surveys and showcasing, answering questions. It's just a really fun event, I enjoy it each day, so thank you for all that will be there, are pulling information together, are spending your Saturday morning with the community, it's gearing up to be a really fun day. So, for anybody listening, there is a free family fun run that's like a mile, it's up to Laux Park and Back, so it's about a mile long, so it's kind of a walk-run for anybody who wants to participate in that at 8:30, and then the doors will open at 9:00, and it is open to the, not only the Marion community, but the community at large. Everyone's welcome, and we hope to see lots of faces there, lots of kids, there's lots of things to do, face painters, Hy-Vee will be there with their smoothie bike, adult and kids version, so you can make your own smoothie on the smoothie bike. It's, yeah, just all sorts of fun, so thank you for that. Just one other piece, thank you to Parks for helping out with some compost here at the Uptown Garden, that's right off here at City Hall. Just a reminder, it's kind of treated like a pocket park, so it's a place to go have lunch and hang out at, you know, on those nice days as well with picnic tables, but Master Gardeners will be there Saturday as well, and they're always a great resource as we're heading into planting season, and it's really nice and people are wanting to be out and working in their gardens. We spent some time getting the garden beds here ready to go with some volunteers, and I know it's anxious, but we'll have some cold nights, so see the Master Gardeners too, and thank you to Parks for getting the compost over and helping us out to get that ready for the food pantry. That's what I got.
Well. Nothing. Thanks. Okay, for my part, we've had several ribbon cuttings recently, and at least one groundbreaking that I can think of since the last meeting, those have become so common, I'm thinking about investing in my own hard hat. So, we're coming up on the season now, so we'll see more groundbreakings hopefully as the city continues to grow and thrive and people see opportunity here, so they want to join our momentum and all the excellent work that you're all doing. So, thank you to everyone for your hard work. Also, just a couple of things, on the consent agenda, we received and filed the draft report from the consultant for the Collaborative Growth Initiative, which is an initiative of the mayors of Cedar Rapids, Hiawatha, and Marion, so you'll be hearing more about that, is that, as different components of that are being implemented. Obviously, any funding needs would need to be approved by the city council, but that's an exciting initiative that we're all, all the metro area communities are working on together to grow the population of the region, to continue attracting talent that we need to power the economy and to supply the businesses with the talent that they need to continue growing and creating the growth and prosperity of this region. The other thing is, on Tuesday, we had fairly lengthy discussion on the automatic, automated trash collection, and I just want to thank everyone for, for that, that great discussion, and, and, and I want to acknowledge all the work that went into getting to that point, and really point out something really important, which is, we are, in having that discussion on Tuesday, we were way ahead of the implementation, which is something that is a big achievement, I think, for us, because we're used to having things, deciding on things as, pretty much as we're implementing them, and that we have a lot of time here to be able to absorb everything, to, to prepare the community, to share information, to educate ourselves and the community about it, and to really be planful and thoughtful about how we do things, and so I want to acknowledge that, thank all the staff for all the work that you've done in getting us, getting us to this point on that really important and pretty large project for, for our community, so thank you. I think it just, it just increases our chance of success when we're that diligent and thoughtful and planful in, in doing things, so with that, let's keep working together, giving each other the benefit of the doubt, seeing the best in each other, and reaching higher together. Have a great week.